Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the county council meeting of Monday, May 22. Would you all rise for the pledge of allegiance and then remain standing for our invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Heavenly Father, watch over us tonight and guide our actions as we represent the residents of Beaufort County. Help us to accept the privilege of serving our constituents with compassion, always putting their interests above our own, and never seeking personal gain, status, or prestige. Guide us to act with character and conviction, to listen with understanding and goodwill, and to speak with charity and restraint. Remind us always to maintain a commitment to integrity and reliability. Finally, on this Monday before Memorial Day, let us honor and remember all the military personnel who gave their lives in the line of duty to protect our rights and freedoms. We ask this as your sons and daughters, confident in your goodness and love. Amen.
Public notice of this meeting has been published, posted, and distributed in compliance with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act. Item number four is the approval of the agenda, and I'm going to ask a member to amend the agenda as follows. We'd like to add an item that came from the public facilities meeting. Those of you in the audience who were not at the public facilities meeting, the item is item number eight from the public facilities. It is recommending the approval of an ordinance by title only authorizing the county administrator to execute the necessary documents and provide funding for the purchase of a portion of real property located on Highway 170 with a TMS number also known as 20 acres of land next to the current cooler tract that is owned by Oldfield Community. The second item is, under the consent agenda, the agencies, boards, and commissions, appointments and reappointments, the removal of item number three and deferring that appointment for a later date. The other items to the library board, the township fire board, and the Low Country Council of Governments Workforce Board will remain. So I would ask for a motion and second of those amendments to the agenda.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. McKellen makes the motion, and Mr. Cunningham makes the second. Do they motioned and seconded? Is there any discussion? Seeing none, without objection, those amendments will be approved. Now I need a motion for the agenda as amended.
So move.
Second.
Mr. McKellen makes the motion. Mr. Cunningham makes the second. Do they motioned and seconded? Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, the amended agenda will be approved. Next is the approval of the minutes of April 10, 2023. A motion and second, please.
I'll make the motion.
Ms. Tabernick makes the motion, and Mr. McKellen makes the second. Do they motioned and seconded? Any objections? Seeing no objections, the minutes are approved. And by the way, Mr. Dawson is not in house tonight, but he is online, and as you can see, we do have a full council members to take any action that we need. I turn over to our administrator for his report. Good evening, Mr. Greenway.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the county council, and those that are with us here tonight and watching us on our county channel and our YouTube channel. Welcome to the council meeting. A couple of announcements this evening. I wanted to first recognize a new hire for you all, Mr. Thomas Hughes, who is our new director of broadcast services. So this is the new Mr. Scott Grooms. Sarah and Patrick have done a great job in recruiting for that position. I'm going to turn the mic over to you for 30 seconds or so and let you briefly tell them a little bit about your background, okay? Because I will mess it up.
That's okay. Thank you. Happy to be here, an honor to serve the citizens and council of Beaufort County. I'm Thomas Hughes. I'm a native South Carolinian. I come to you after escaping the overdevelopment ravages of my beloved Ori County and love it here in Beaufort. Spent my entire career in media, local broadcasts, and about 15 years in Hollywood. So it's really nice to be back in South Carolina and look forward to some exciting changes and developments.
So hopefully, over the next, one of my goals for about a year now is to transition the county channel into being more than just a, this is where you go to watch a meeting type thing. I want us to be out doing some programming. There's a lot of great assets in the county that we need to be filming and highlighting on our county channel. Just a couple that come to mind is the Port Royal Sound Foundation. We now have passive parks that we should be highlighting on the county channel so that folks can get information about those. So I would invite county council, if there's any organization out there that you feel that we should film and do stories on, then please feel free to reach out to Sarah, or Patrick, or myself, or Whitney, and we'll be glad to get that scheduled so that we can get those things. So we got new programming coming. Our team that Sarah and Patrick have assembled are very talented individuals, and they're working on some great shows and some concepts and great ideas are flowing there, and I'm really thankful for the job that that team is doing. One additional thing I'll bring to council's attention, you may not have seen it today, but there was an article that came out this afternoon. Some of you recall that a few months ago, several months ago now, I'm not really sure why this is even a story, you all entered into a lease with a volleyball group in the old warehouse at the depot behind the EMS headquarters and all. That story, I made mention that the person that was the lease was my neighbor. I do recall telling you all that when I presented that item to you back then. So once again, the media did not portray that story entirely accurately, but I just wanted y'all to be aware of that. We are happy to work with anyone who is a volleyball group that needs space to practice, to try to fit them in and program them into that facility, just like we did with the Elite Volleyball Group and now with Holy Trinity School, who their geometry is undergoing some renovations, and they needed a place to practice as well. So they're using the facility also and working with the Elite Volleyball Group. So final item, as I always do, I recognize employees, and I'm going to ask Kimberly Rumsey to come up now. I thought that might be you. This is Kimberly Rumsey. She's with our probate court. She is the court administrator. She's been with us six years. The court administrator position is the go-to person for intra-office administrative functions, technical issues, and primary staff interface with other Beaufort County offices. Kimberly performs and supervises administrative functions of the court, including office, business matters, financial record-keeping, information technology, courtroom logistics, and related functions. She was instrumental in managing the upcoming probate court renovations, which were very much in need of occurring a lot sooner than we were able to do. Kimberly moved to South Carolina eight years ago to help a sister family whose mother is diagnosed with advanced Alzheimer's, and she organizes an annual Alzheimer's Walk in her neighborhood. In addition, she is a rescue mom to fur baby Tyson, her Boston terrier. So I'm going to turn the mic over to you if you want to say a few words.
Of course.
And then we're going to get a picture, and then everybody's going to clap for you, okay?
Thank you.
In that order.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you so much for this recognition. I appreciate you honoring me and recognizing my work and what I do in probate court. I'm very proud of that. I am involved heavily with the renovation that's happening in our office, and I'm very proud of that. And I thank Judge Galvin for tipping my name into the hat and was chosen to be recognized here this evening. So for her, I'm grateful for that. I'm grateful for her to giving me the opportunity to be a part of it. As Mr. Greenway said, our office, basically, the 1970s called, and they want their furniture back, so it's long overdue. So we're really, really pleased about that. We also have a lot of good things happening in probate court. We have three new employees that are starting, two that have already started, and one that's starting in two weeks. And we're also getting a new case management software that I've been involved with as well. So again, thank you very much. Thank you, Judge Galvin. Also, there's no I in team. Most of my team's here today, so I'm nothing without those guys. So I appreciate your acknowledgement this evening.
Thank you.
Ms. Stevens? Anastasia? Good. So this is Anastasia Jinkan. She's administrative specialist with the registered deeds office. You've only been with us a few months, right? Less than one year? Okay? That's great. Well, I mean, almost a year, right? July 2022. She has cross-training in all aspects of the registered deeds office, with a bachelor's degree in human services and years of experiencing managing budgets, research, and customer service. She'll be a great candidate for a leadership role in the registered deeds office. Although she's only been with the registered deeds office for a short time, she has proven herself to be indispensable in her work ethic, organizational communication skills, and she is an active member of the Beaufort County Emerging Leadership Program. And if you're not familiar with what that is, that is a program that was initiated by our ACA for Engineering and Infrastructure, Mr. Frelix, who set that up for a way for them to work together, younger folks that show potential for leadership here, to be future leaders in our organization. They do, they meet periodically, they do events together, they do community service projects together. So very proud that Jared has initiated that and been instrumental in getting that off the ground. You are a mother of six children, two in college, a 15-year-old, a 13-year-old, an eight-year-old, and a four-year-old.
Wow.
You don't even look tired. In addition to that, she has three degrees, a bachelor's degree in human services, a master's degree in business administration, and is completing an associate's degree in biblical studies. And she serves as a minister at Lifehouse Ministries Church, guiding and supporting others in their spiritual journey. I'm going to let you say a few words if you want to. If you don't want to, that's fine as well. I'm catching a cold here. And then we're going to get a picture, and people are going to clap while we're getting our pictures.
I just want to say thank you for the opportunity. I thank my office for nominating me, and it's really been a pleasure working with Beaufort County so far.
Congratulations. Our final person could not be with us this evening. I think we have his picture. Mr. Ian Denis with our GIS department. He's a GIS analyst. Ian worked for the county from 2006 to 2016, then left the county for a short period of time, and then came back in 2019. Ian supports GIS mobile applications and web mapping applications. He has created several GIS field collection applications, most recently for animal control, litter control, and mosquito control. He was also integral in supporting the county council redistricting effort back when we did that last year. Also, Ian was instrumental in creating the development tracking software program that you all were presented several months ago or several weeks ago that allows people to go on and see where development projects are in the process, if they're under review or in the development stage, or have been closed out or whatever. So great application that Ian helped build there along with the GIS team. Ian, and I was shocked when I read this today or found this out today, is grandpa to three rambunctious kids who make life so enjoyable for him. He does not look like he's grandpa age, but anyway, plays guitar as part of the worship team for Compassion Christian Church, enjoys being with family and friends in the playground, which we all call the Low Country. He loves to hike and kayak, et cetera. Let's give him a round of applause. And Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Next on our agenda are two proclamations, the first of which was supposed to be presented by Mr. Dawson, but Mr. Dawson could not be here in person to read that proclamation, so I have asked Councilman Cunningham to do that instead. Councilman Cunningham, would you please do the proclamation for Emergency Medical Services Week?
Y'all got to come on up. I'm coming up here. How are you?
I'm not sure.
No, you're good. I'm just going to do it from here so you guys can hear me from the microphone. Whereas Beaufort County is fortunate in having a highly trained and well-equipped emergency medical services, and whereas this emergency medical services is staffed by professionals and experienced emergency medical technicians and paramedics who are on-call day and night, and whereas emergency medical services is vital public service, and whereas the members of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas across quality, emergency care dramatically improves their survival and recovery rate of those who experience subtle illness or injury, and whereas the members of a medical emergency services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills, and whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of the emergency medical service providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week, now therefore, let it be bestowed that Beaufort County Council proclaims May 22 through May 27 Emergency Medical Services Week dated 22nd day of May 2023, signed by Mr. Chairman Joe Passamit. I just want to say I appreciate you guys. You guys have helped my area out a lot, and I know south abroad, north abroad, you guys are always on-call. I couldn't do your job, so I appreciate the work that you guys do. Thank you.
Congratulations.
On behalf of all the employees at Beaufort County MS, thank you county council members for this proclamation. Thank you.
Well deserved. Yep. Next is a proclamation that was supposed to be read by me, but I'm going to ask Mr. McKellen to read that proclamation after I read this, so you will understand after I read this why it's being read. "In September of 2005, on the first day of school, Martha Cothran, a history teacher at Robinson High School in Little Rock, Arkansas, did something not to be forgotten. On the first day of school, with the permission of the school superintendent, the principal, and the building supervisor, she removed all the desks in her classroom. When the first period kids entered the room, they discovered there were no desks. Mr. Cothran, Ms. Cothran, where are our desks? She replied, 'You can't have a desk until you tell me how you earned the right to sit at a desk.' They thought, 'Well, maybe it's our grades,' now she said. 'Well, maybe it's our behavior.'" She told them, 'No, it's not even behavior,' and so they came and went. The first period, the second period, the third period, still no desk in the classroom. Kids called their parents to tell them what was happening, and by early afternoon, television news crews had started gathering at the school to report about this crazy teacher who had taken all the desks out of her room. The final period of the day came, and as puzzled students found seats on the floor of the deskless classroom, Martha Cothran said, 'Throughout the day, no one has been able to tell me just what he or she has done to earn the right to sit at the desks that are ordinarily found in this classroom. Now I'm going to tell you.'" At this point, Martha Cothran went over to the door of her classroom and opened it. Twenty-seven U.S. veterans, all in uniform, walked into that classroom, each one carrying a desk. The vets began placing the desks in the rows, and then they would walk over and stand alongside the wall. By the time the last soldier had set the final desk in place, those kids started to understand, perhaps for the first time in their lives, just how the right to sit at those desks had been earned. Martha said, 'You didn't earn the right to sit at these desks. These heroes did it for you. They placed a desk here for you. They went halfway around the world, giving up their education and interrupting their careers and families so that you could have the freedom you have now. Now it's up to you to sit in them. It's your responsibility to learn, to be good students, and to be good citizens. They paid the price so that you could have the freedom to get an education, and don't ever forget it.'" By the way, this is a true story, and this teacher was awarded the Veterans of Foreign Wars Teacher of the Year for the state of Arkansas in 2006, and she is the daughter of a World War II POW. So if you think this email that I got is worth passing on, I'll be glad to send it to you, because let us always remember that men and women of our military and the rights they have won have won for us. Mr. McKellen.
I'm just going to read this to the audience. This is a proclamation signed by Joe Passamit, the chairman. "Whereas for generations, the freedom and security enjoyed by the citizens of the United States are direct results of the continued vigilance and service of the United States Armed Forces over the history of our great nation, and whereas the sacrifices of those who serve, those currently serving, and the family members who support them have preserved the liberties that have enriched Beaufort County and this nation, making it unique in the world and community. And whereas today, the military presence in Beaufort County employs more than 21,000 people and has a total economic impact of over $2.5 billion annually, and whereas Beaufort County is home to over 50,000 veterans, and whereas in 2004, the U.S. Congress passed a resolution proclaiming May as National Military Appreciation Month, encouraging all citizens to honor current and former members of the U.S. Armed Forces and their families, including those who made the ultimate sacrifice. And whereas the month of May was selected for this display of patriotism because during this month, we celebrate Victory in Europe Day, Military Spouse Day, Loyalty Day, Armed Forces Day, National Day of Prayer, and Memorial Day, which is upcoming. Whereas on this month and throughout the year, Beaufort County Council expresses gratitude to Beaufort County servicemembers, veterans, and their families who have dedicated their lives in defense of our freedoms. Now therefore be it resolved that Beaufort County Council recognize May 2023 as Military Appreciation Month."
Are there any veterans in attendance tonight? If you aren't, would you please stand so we can observe? As you know, we do only have 15 minutes for comments. We have several people who would like to comment on two specific items. I want to make sure that both individuals who want to talk about item number 14 and item number 17 have a chance to address council, so I'm going to ask Ms. Maria Walls, our treasurer, to come forward to speak first about item number 17.
Yes, sir. The budget council is considering this evening was created by administration. It does not include the funding requested for the treasurer's office that I discussed with all of you in my April 10 presentation. In the past month, council was asked on multiple occasions for a collaborative, public discussion about the merits of our budget request, which were denied. I am formally and publicly asking you to fully fund our request, which reflects what is needed to continue our current standard of operations. This funding was to increase the starting salaries for the roles in our office so that we could retain and recruit team members qualified and capable of serving our taxpayers. Currently, an entry-level position on our team starts at $17.98. It requires a degree and multiple years of professional experience in fields similar to a bank teller. Despite over 150 phone interviews in the past year, we've only been able to hire two team members and at a far higher rate than $17.98. We simply cannot retain or attract qualified team members willing to work for that amount. It has resulted in vacancies for multiple years, required support from employment agencies, and a loss of tenured staff. At .54, administration's current budget of 3% increase is nowhere near enough. We simply cannot provide the quality care our taxpayers deserve when the candidates applying are predominantly home healthcare aides and Walmart clerks. Let me share with you some current job postings. A stock clerk at Buc-Ee starts at $17 an hour. If you work at the car wash there, you start at $20 an hour. Entry-level positions at SEDOT start at $20 an hour. Beaufort County itself has job postings right now for lifeguards, recreation aides, and administration clerks paying up to $1,856, all of which only require a high school diploma. And last, but certainly my favorite, K-9 Resorts and Doggy Daycare on Route 170 starts at $18 an hour. Our applicants can get paid more to hug a puppy than serve our taxpayers. The treasurer's office cannot sustain the trajectory of our volume without improving the salaries of our team. The same team who is served with distinction, the same team who transitioned overnight during COVID closures worked through holidays and outside normal processes to shield our taxpayers and Beaufort County from the billing delays caused in the auditor's office. They calculated the mill value, caught mileage mistakes, achieved the highest collection rate on record, earned tens of millions of dollars for every government entity in Beaufort County in investment returns, and who continue today to constantly be looking for ways to improve and serve our taxpayers better. Please restore the resources necessary for us to keep being the best we can be for Beaufort County's taxpayers."
Thank you. Next, I'm going to call on Cade Yarborough.
Hi, I'm Cade Yarborough, and I'm vice chair of the Fusky Island Council. I'll never forget the tough times my family faced during the 2008 recession, when it was making hard for a living. My number one priority is to make sure that never happens to the island families again. The STR proposal you guys are looking at today will hurt people on the Fusky. It will especially to those who can least afford it. Everyone of the council surveys and the public forums have shown that overwhelming majority of islanders supports conditional use permits. I believe that compromise is still possible. Earlier this month, Councilman Lawson urged us to take up the issue again with our council. That night, the Dufusky council met, and I made a motion to change our position from special use permitting to conditional use, and it passed 3 to 1 vote. Chairman Pickney falsely accused me and another member of violating our bylaws and code of ethics and refused to accept our action. Mr. Pickney continues to seek punishment for both of us, including possible removal from the council. Many people, including myself, believe he is overstepping his position of authority. Two weeks ago, Eric Greenway said, "Our council can't hold two votes on this issue." Again, it was Mr. Lawson who suggested the issue to be lifted. Again, it was Mr. Lawson who suggested the issue to be looked at again. The first vote made was made in 2022 council, when several of us weren't even serving. My motion had passed in the 2023 council. So regardless of what you were told, the official position of the DeFuski Island Council is currently in favor of conditional use permitting. During the Ms. Howard's committee meeting, Mr. Lawson recommended moving this proposal onto the full council, but asked that the issue be discussed first at our council's May 16th meeting. Unfortunately, Chairman Pickney did not honor Mark's request, explaining that senior county staffers and told him not to bring up the matter again, even though Mark had requested it. I did not follow, or I did follow Mark's guidance, however, and proposed three different motions laying out various compromises. All three motions were defeated by tie votes. I believe we're very close to a good compromise, which could simply say that all property owners should be included in the grandfathering language. This would include folks that had already invested in the DeFuski land before it became an issue. Our side on the issue wants to work out a compromise. I ask that you encourage the other side to come to the table as well. Thank you for your time.
Leanne Coulter.
Hi, my name is Leanne Coulter. I'm a full-time resident on DeFuski Island and serve on the council.
Pull that microphone closer, Leanne. Thank you.
Can you hear me now? Okay. Trying to, trying to balance the business, the needs of a business and the residential community has been a challenge. The proposed text amendment that you currently have on short-term rentals on DeFuski Island was passed by the DeFuski Island Council in December of 2022 with a vote of five to zero with one extension. Mr. Lawson has suggested that the community and the council try to find a compromise. A significant compromise was made last December. On the request of the community, the DeFuski Island Council asked Beaufort County to grandfather all existing short-term rentals rather than using the guidelines that they had suggested for grandfathering, which would allow short-term rentals from 2019 and prior to that to be grandfathered in. I don't believe that the DeFuski Island Council or the full-time residents are trying to create a hardship for anyone. The issue still remains unresolved is the proposed use of special use permit in the residential districts only. The wording of the proposal reads, providing an opportunity for public comment on the granting of a short-term rental permit in the residential transit zones only, not in the business, not in the mixed use, those are permitted uses. This would only apply to the residential communities. That's it. One opportunity to make one comment about a business in our residential neighborhoods. The residents of DeFuski Island feel that that's not unreasonable to ask. The use of a short-term, a special use permit for short-term rentals is in accordance with other unincorporated residential areas of Beaufort County. This proposal is not trying to limit short-term rentals on the island. Short-term rentals will be allowed in all zones on DeFuski Island with the exception of the nature preserve and an industrial zone. Community planning is about the future. It's about looking five, 10, or even 20 years out and ask and asking, what do I want my community to look like? I think it's fair to say that no one on DeFuski Island wants the situation that Hilton Head is now facing. Again, it's not always easy to balance the residential and business needs of a community. I'm asking you to vote yes on the proposed text amendment to the DeFuski Island Community Development Code as recommended by the council. Thank you.
Deborah Smith.
Okay, just before we start, point of personal privilege, if that's allowed, I wanted to just say we, the paramedics and EMTs were honored earlier today. And I have to tell you that everybody on DeFuski knows that we just really couldn't survive there without the courageous people who come over there and keep us safe. I hope that was okay to mention. Oh, my time, I guess went ahead anyway. I'm Deb Smith. I'm former chair of the DeFuski Island Council. I was chair, I was on the council for six years. I was chair for the last two years. I was chair of the committee that rewrote the DeFuski Island Code and Plan, which is one difference between us and other unincorporated areas of Beaufort County. This has been an extremely difficult and contentious situation with the, on our island. I was asked about 18 months ago by Mark Davis to serve as a liaison with property owners on this issue with short-term rental owners. I have no financial interest, although I've been accused of that. I used to own DeFuski Rental Group. I sold it out two years ago. I won't benefit at all on this, you know, one way or another, however it's resolved. We are feeling a sense of disconnect between what happens here and the county and the discussions on this issue and the role of the DeFuski Island Council and what's going on back on DeFuski. Because on DeFuski, there are very few people right now who think that the DeFuski Island Council is serving the interests of the community. And when they, and the logo, the slogan of the DeFuski Island Council is the voice of the island, they have not been the voice of the majority of the island on this issue. We have gone through a long, laborious process of hearings and surveys and this and that, all spearheaded by members of the DeFuski Island Council and particularly Ms. Coulter's, friend of mine, codes committee. Every tool that they set forth to determine how the public viewed on this showed that by a margin of two to one, or by two-thirds, the people on DeFuski, not just, you know, businesses, Ms. Coulter would have you believe, but including full-time owners and part-time owners, supported conditional use permitting and felt the special use permitting was too onerous for, for people who have to go over on a boat and go through multiple meetings and culminating with a zoning board of appeals meeting. The burden is too big. You don't see more DeFuski people here because to do, to come to this meeting and talk about it, they'd have to stay overnight.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you. So, you know, I guess what we're trying to say to you today is take a close look at this. What you're hearing from the DeFuski Island Council is not representing the majority of the island. We are willing to compromise, and we think we're very, very close. We don't know why it's such a small island. We can't come together and come up with something that is more reasonable and doesn't hurt people. Thank you very much for your time.
John Schardner.
I'm John Schardner. I'm on the DeFuski Island Council. This is my 13th year starting. For the past year, year and a half, we've been discussing the STRs. And the proposal which you have in front of you does not represent the people of DeFuski. Over the past year, the codes committee did numerous public meetings, surveys, and three of those surveys came out, two-thirds of the people of DeFuski supports conditional permitting. Problem with special permitting is for us to come up here. I myself had to go through four or five months of coming up here just to get a zoning permit to do something on my property. So I know getting permits, getting licenses is not easy. As I say, the council voted on what you have in front of you, and it did not represent the people of DeFuski Island. It just, I was surprised that the council did that, but I'm here to say the majority of the people of DeFuski favor conditional permits. Thank you.
Mr. Yarborough, can you address council in two minutes that will take us to the 15-minute mark?
Hi, I'm Stuart Yarborough. I am the spokesperson for the Alliance for Responsible Rentals, representing 120 islanders. I'd like to address the DeFuski STR proposal that is before you that has been described as a compromise. It is not a compromise. After the DeFuski Island Council had been advised that they could not cap or limit STRs in the historic district in April of last year, anti-STR council members immediately started advocating for special use permitting as a way to deter those that wish to establish short-term rentals on DeFuski. We believe this process will be weaponized by a minority in the historic district to try to limit STRs, as those that advocated for this process keep repeating that they want limits in an area of roughly four square miles that now contains approximately 24 active short-term rentals. Capping or banning STRs was never an option, so special use permitting is not a compromise. For DeFuski, special use permitting is an extreme position. It will stifle property sales and building as well as limit lodging for DeFuski Island, effectively kneecapping the economy. The dating, the data collected by the DeFuski Island Council is clear. Two-thirds of those in the historic district want conditional use permitting as a result of the data collected by the DeFuski Island Council. The latest, the latest election further confirms the island wants conditional use permitting by the voting, to a margin of four to one in favor of special or conditional use candidates. I would like to invite Beaufort County council members to DeFuski Island to see how vastly underdeveloped the historic district truly is. I'm sure that you would be shocked that, that the most restrictive STR regulations in Beaufort County are being imposed on this community. Last, I would like to address the claims that this process would be done via Zoom. I'd like to ask if this is absolutely the case. Is this a guarantee? Hillary Austin, the person in charge of DeFuski Island in the planning department, said this is not the case. If this is not, the process will place an undue burden on islanders, and that's pure and simple. We have no bridge. The island, DeFuski Island ferry system is in a state of collapse, yet we keep moving forward a process that requires several visits to Beaufort by residents. With all this uncertainty, how can we vote for a process that contains elements? Sorry.
It's okay. Thank you.
Have a good day. Thank you.
Okay, we will end the citizen comments. With permission of council, I'm not sure that we need an executive session because we did an executive session. The matters rising out of executive session came from the meeting, and I would ask council member Taverne to read what came out of the executive session in the Public Facilities Committee meeting.
So I'd like to make a motion that county council appoint Mr. Peter Christian to the Green Space Advisory Committee to represent the southern geographic region, and this would complete the committee.
I'll second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Duly motioned and seconded, is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, Mr. Christensen will be appointed to the committee without objection. Are there any objections? I see no objections. That matter has passed. We move on to our liaison and committee reports. Any reports from any council member? Ms. Taverne.
So I have three. I'll try to be brief. Library Board of Trustees, Matt and Ms. Howard, you'd be happy to know, Port Royal Library Design was presented by the architects, so that's proceeding along. We're very excited to have another branch. And for everyone in the room and online, summer reading kicks off June 1st and goes till July 31st, and none of us are too old to participate. This year, the theme is All Together Now. So all you have to do is stop into any library to pick up your game board, start reading, or you can download it, start reading, and then you can win prizes. And last year, there were a lot of senior citizens that won prizes, so it's not just for children. So please make sure you participate. In addition to summer reading, the libraries will be a site for summer break cafe program. Any Beaufort County resident ages zero to 18, I don't know what zero is about, but whatever, can receive a free daily lunch Monday through Friday at any library branch during the summer. And the program runs June 7th to August 4th. And if you've never been there, when they feed the children, it's, they're just so appreciative. And I don't know that I would like what they eat, but they like it, so that's all that counts. My second report was from the school board meeting, and I recognize we have two board members here, Colonel Guyer and Mr. Smith, and Tanya Crosby, their CFO. I went to the meeting. They honored students from across the district, as they always do. They authorized the superintendent to apply for federal, state, and local grant applications. They did, Mr. Guyer did a great report on the finance committee and construction updates. Ms. Crosby reviewed the 2324 budget and asked the board to certify that budget, which they did, and she noted the budget would be presented tonight. And then Dr. Rodriguez and the board members took a moment to thank county council for supporting a request to the legislature to grant Beaufort County schools fiscal autonomy. And they expressed deep appreciation for our support, and they're excited to work with us. And my third one's totally different, county transportation committee, very important committee.
Yes.
They met, we had an update on SEDOT projects, and there were some transmission issues. We couldn't hear very well. Pavement preservation project, and Jared could correct me if I'm wrong, the rejuvenator update, we're in year six, the projects are mostly completed, they'll be done this month, and then we moved to year seven schedule. And of course, there was the infamous 170 triangle update with near-term projects to go out to bid this week and looking at the Oldfield area as well. Chairman Gordon reported that he received kudos at the state meeting, the annual meeting that our committee is the best CTC in the state. So I think we should be proud of that.
Yes, very.
And he also reminded all members of that committee that at the July meeting, they're to present the secondary roads in their districts that are in need of attention, there is money to spend there. So, and, and he ran it like Logan did, one hour and done. So, very good meeting.
He's very good. He's good, yeah. And he comes from my district, too, by the way.
Mr. Lawson.
Yes, I'm on the finance committee. We do have the third reading, and this is on the consent agenda, third reading of an ordinance authorizing redemption of obligation bonds, which is a, a tax savings to our constituents. And then our next Finance Administration and Economic Development Committee meeting is June 19th at 3:00 p.m., right here.
Any others?
The airport committee board, April 27th, they had the ribbon cutting at Frog Ford. That went over very well. There was over 100 people there. Hilton Head Airport, June 7th, all the bids are going to be due for that build out, and people are pretty excited about it. Another thing that's taking place for these airports is all these board appointments. We're going to coordinate the schedule of interviews and have them meet here at the council as well. So, and that's the airport board.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman, I, I'm going to attempt to make a report, and I probably going to need some assistance in announcing this. I'm the liaison for the Beaufort Jazz Water, the Sioux Authority, and they have a new executive director.
Yes.
She is, and I need her name, so I need some help with that. I just want to announce her name at this time.
Yes, I did meet her at the Beaufort Economic Development. She was there.
Okay, and I will meet her this Thursday at the regular board meeting.
Great.
So I need to insert that, Sarah, her name. Thank you. Okay.
Anyone else? Seeing none, we're now going to move to our public hearings and action items. Our first is the approval of the consent agenda, the three items that are on the consent agenda as amended, so I need a motion and second. Mr. Lawson makes the motion.
Second.
Mr. McKellen makes the second. Duly motioned and seconded for the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Is there any objection?
I just want to clarify, this is amended?
Yes.
Okay.
Seeing none, the consent agenda is approved as amended. Next item, first reading of an ordinance for a text amendment to the Community Development Code, Appendix B, the DeFuski Island Community Development Code, to amend Division B dot three, section B dot three dot two zero, consolidate land use table and land use definitions, and to add a new section, B dot three dot three zero, other standards, and a new subsection, B dot three dot three zero dot A, short-term rental, to allow the usage of short-term rentals as a special use in D two rural, D two R dash CP, rural conventionally platted, D two R dash GH, rural gula heritage, and D three, general neighborhood, and a permitted use in D four mixed use, D five village center, and D five general commercial. A motion and a second.
I'd like to make the motion, Mr. Chairman.
A motion has been made.
I'll second.
Mr. Glover makes the second. Who would like to be first to speak since you made the motion? Alice, you may speak first.
Yes, sir. I would, I am supporting this because this will mirror what we are doing throughout the unincorporated county with short-term rentals. I do understand that DeFuski is an island and I do understand that DeFuski is an island and only accessible by ferry. I think we will be able, as a county, with assurances from our administrator to accommodate those special use permit applications as best we can with technology, and so that is why I'm in favor, because this mirrors what we are doing throughout the county on short-term rentals.
Thank you. Mr. Glover, you've seconded, so you get to speak next.
Yes, and I'm probably the opposite of her at this time, so...
It's okay.
Let me say that I am moving this forward, but I am hoping that as a council, somewhere we can, because DeFuski is special. You got to want to go to the DeFuski, and they do want to come here, but the transportation is an issue. But if this council can move or can have some type of session there on the DeFuski, to me, it's like getting hands-on information, hands-on presence. And I would hope that between now and whatever the language is in this ordinance is done, that we can at least visit the DeFuski and respect that community and say, "We'll come to you," and as many people, as many council members who would want to go. But that's what I would want to support at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Mr. Lawson?
Yes, this is my district, which I appreciate the fact that I've been able now, this is my fifth year of representing them. And this has been something that has divided that community. And let me go back and give you some history as a fact that the state legislature passed laws that made it that you had to get a business license to do short-term rentals. And then we passed our law here in council that said, "Yes, you have to do that." There is no hotel currently overrun DeFuski. Lots and lots of short-term rental, long-term rentals have been going on there, but it made it so that people had to go get a business license to be able to provide their short-term rentals. In doing that, we realized that our zoning over there is lacking, and it would not allow you to get a business license in that zoning. And the thing with DeFuski is, is even though, you know, we talk about it being in the unincorporated areas, we have special zoning over there for DeFuski. It is unlike any place else in the county when it comes to how it's zoned and what is there in our current verbiage. So, when we say we want to make it just like the rest of the county, you know, that's where, as Mr. Glover said, we need to figure out what direction we're heading. So, you know, when we look at what's happening right now, I think a lot of us don't understand, everyone's for short-term rentals over there. So, it's not like this is an ordinance that we're saying, "Okay, we're not going to allow short-term rentals." Everybody is for short-term rentals over there because it's a way of life. I mean, who would have thought 10 years ago that we'd be discussing this, that Airbnb's would even exist? Who would have thought they'd rent out their living room to somebody through an Airbnb? But that's how things have changed so much in the past 10 years. The people of DeFuski that I've been around and gotten to know, and gotten to know many of them, they are resilient, they are passionate about what they do, they are people that push forward and move through adversity. And all this time, I've been hoping that they would come, the people of DeFuski, would come to an agreement without us having to make decisions up here for them. And that's still my belief. My thought is that that still is going to happen. One thing that I am disappointed in, we moved it out of committee. I knew that they had a DeFuski Island Council meeting coming up, and I said, "Okay, go back and let's have you talk about this at the DeFuski Island Council meeting." And with that, I'm not sure where it came from, but Mr. Pinkney, who's the chairman, said that he was advised not to discuss this topic at that meeting, which was kind of disappointing to me, because again, that was something they're supposed to go back, and they had the opportunity to do that. So, representing DeFuski and trying to represent both sides, and yes, there are people on both sides, people that, and again, not against rentals, they're against, as you heard here, it's very difficult to pick up, is conditional use rentals and special use rentals. And that's what we're talking about. We're not talking about whether they're allowed to use short-term rentals. It's about the application process, who qualifies, who doesn't qualify. At this time, you know, knowing what I know and knowing they didn't get a chance from the last time, I am making a motion that we move this first reading to our next council meeting to give ourselves, I think, three more weeks for have them look at this. I think it's important, again, knowing the people of DeFuski, I've watched them make it through so many adverse things in the past and come to solutions and that people can work with. I think that is what can possibly happen. So, at this time, again, trying to represent both sides. I'm not trying to pick one side or the other, but again, to try to get us back to the table and figure out what needs to be done, I'm making a motion to move this to the next council meeting, the first reading.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, motioned and seconded to move this item...
Who was the second?
Mr. McKellen. Okay, duly motioned and seconded, discussion over that. You were the second. We know you made the motion.
As all of my colleagues on council know, I don't have a stellar track record having success asking for delays with regard to any projects. But at this one, I have to tell you, I don't clearly understand the benefit of having the special designation for short-term rentals as opposed to the conditional, not because I'm a slow learner, but because I'm not sure I have all the information I need to make a decision. When I worked somewhere else within the county, it was always important for me to have all the facts that I needed before I rendered a judgment and a decision. I don't have those facts. So, I support Mr. Lawson's motion for moving this along, and I support his request for a delay, and I will support that motion as we move forward.
Mr. Cunningham?
Yeah, Mr. McKellen and I share the same, I guess, dilemma, I'll say. I was going to ask for myself, maybe it's just me, Mr. McKellen, but just a point of education for us, and if I missed it in another meeting, I apologize, but the difference between those two on the changes, just so it's on the record for the public and for me to comprehend before I vote on something, I don't know what the hell I'm talking about, just to make sure.
You're not alone in that.
So, and I'm answering this question. Rob Merchant is more than capable of answering this question, but I want to answer the question because I'm the one, as county administrator, that is recommending that you all do this by special exception. So, there are three types of approvals in a community development or zoning code. You have a permitted use, and that is if, you know, if it's listed there and you come in and say, "Hey, I want to put a farm on my property, and it's agriculturally zoned, and a farm is a permitted use," you can do that without any trouble. Second level of that is saying that, hey, some particular things are appropriate in, given zoning districts, as long as someone meets conditions. So, like an automobile garage in a general commercial zoning district may be appropriate as long as the garage is, you know, maybe 300 feet from a house or something like that. So, conditional use, you meet the conditions, you get your permit. Special use or special exception is one step beyond that. It basically says this may be allowed in certain zoning districts, this type of use, but because of the intensity and the degree to which these things tend to operate, there needs to be a public hearing before a body, and that body is the Zoning Board of Appeals, to hear each individual case, to make sure that the community has an opportunity to weigh in upon a public hearing and have the Zoning Board of Appeals to determine whether or not that use is appropriately situated in that neighborhood. The reason I recommend a special exception over a conditional use is there's no limit to the number of conditional use items you can have in a community development code. If you go through the special exception process, the Zoning Board of Appeals and the people that live on DeFuski Island can come and say, "Hey, we already have eight of these on this road. We don't want any more on this road." And the Zoning Board of Appeals can decide that enough is enough, and that more than eight or nine or whatever the number would be would change the character of that road from strictly residential and be a detrimental impact, and then they can stop allowing the short-term rentals. If it's just conditional use, the whole street could turn into short-term rental, and the folks that live there full-time could be dealing with some very uncomfortable situations because these short-term rentals do cause problems, believe it or not. And on DeFuski Island, where there's no police or no, there's no around-the-clock police force, if problems start occurring out there, the people that live there permanently are going to have a hard time getting relief from those situations. That's why, that's one reason why I say special exception on DeFuski Island. Yes, it is inconvenient to live on DeFuski Island. The county is under no obligation to continue to provide opportunities for the people that choose to live out on DeFuski Island full-time to have the conveniences that the people that live on the mainland enjoy. It's an island. It's hard to get there. There's a reason why it's hard to get there. That limits the number of people that go out there. So, special exception is the best course out there, or the reason that it's on review and a public hearing is required. And two, it's what we're doing in all other zoning districts on the mainland of the county. And there's no reason why it can't occur because we do these things virtually. At the Zoning Board of Appeals a few months ago, we had people in California that owned property here. They were online, on that TV screen, on that monitor, doing their public hearing for their special exception, short-term rental on the mainland in Beaufort County. It can be done. It's not a problem.
I appreciate the education to clarify it, because to be honest, you know, we talk about these things, and we get like sometimes a bird's eye view, but what you just did was perfect. I appreciate that. I will move forward with supporting the postponement based on that knowledge.
May I ask a question? Mr. Administrator, if there's a special designation for a residential area, and people who get that special designation then create problems in that community through bad management or bad practices with whom they, to whom they rent, can that special permit be pulled by someone, and who would be that authority that could revoke that permit?
We can pull it, but we can't pull it without court action, and that takes time if it's conditional use.
So, we'd have to go to court where? Which court?
It would go to magistrate and then to Court of Common.
Common, please.
Court of Common, please, on an appeal, you mean? And that, once that permit is issued, even if there's a bad actor, it's magistrate's court and common, please. Suppose it's conditional and there's a bad actor. What can happen there?
Well, the Zoning Board of Appeals can put the condition on that, that if they violate the terms of the special exception, it ceases immediately.
So, then if a special creates a problem, you have to go through the court process, which could take two years. If it's a conditional, then it could be revoked by action by someone on the executive staff.
No, it's reversed. It's reversed.
It's the reverse. Well, wait a minute. If you have a special...
Right.
Who's a bad actor, would you tell me how to go to magistrate's court?
Again, the Board of Appeals, reason special exception is a good thing. The Board of Appeals, when they're holding public hearings at that, they can approve the special exception outright according to the applications, or they can add additional conditions. If there's a condition that someone's not living up to and meeting, then that would nullify the special exception approval.
And conditional exceptions have to go to court?
That's correct.
How could I have heard it so backwards?
I don't know.
This is a problem I'm having.
By the way, this is not germane to what we're discussing now, which is do we want to postpone? It's germane to the overall, but right now, we're discussing, do you want to postpone?
So, I would reiterate what Mark and Mr. McKellen and Mr. Cunningham said, but I also want to go back to Mr. Glover. I mean, when we were talking about something in my district, we held a community meeting. Hundreds and some people showed up, we listened. When we had the CPO, people showed up, we listened. And I like the suggestion that we go and listen to the people. This is a big to-do. This is more than some of the other things we deal with. This is big for these residents, so...
You're not, so if I may, I'm sorry, you're not going to solve the problem on DeFuski Island with this.
Again, that's not germane to what we're discussing. We're discussing, do you want to postpone this? Yes or no?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, call the roll.
We haven't heard from anybody else want to speak?
I just have, I just have one thing. It sounded like there was some information in the public comment where the DeFuski Island Council had generated some feedback. That was not included in our packet, and I'm in favor of postponing because I want more information, too, if I'm going to make a decision about something.
Okay, would you call the roll, please?
Are we calling on which motion?
Postponed.
Postponed to the next meeting.
To the next meeting.
Councilmember Lawson?
Mark Lawson, yes.
Councilmember McKellen?
Yes.
Councilmember Taverneck?
Yes.
Councilmember Reitz?
Yes.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Glover?
Yes.
Councilmember Dawson?
You're on mute. Thank you.
He said yes.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Bartholomew?
Yes.
Chairman Passamit?
Yes.
The motion to postpone passes.
Okay, item number 14 is now postponed.
So, what would you all like for staff to do with this in the next three weeks? Because we have been at this standstill and stalemate for almost, well, a little over a year now. You're not going to get a compromise out there. So, what would you like? The county administration needs for you all to give me some direction as to what you want done with this item, because one side's dug in on special exception, the other side's dug in on conditional use, so tell me what you want me to do.
Well, let me answer that question.
One thing you should do is give us a very brief overall summary of the differences of what you just described to us, so we have them in clear, concise terms, so we're not guessing at it, right? Conditional, special use. Get something to us in that regard.
I think he was very clear, and it will be coming in writing, conditional use has its own set of rules, and if you violate those rules, you do not get to have your conditional use taken away from you. You're going to have to do something else, go through the court system. On the other hand, with a special use permit, it can be dictated that if you violate the conditions of the special usage, that permit can be pulled immediately. Is that a fair summary, Mr. Greenway?
That's my interpretation. Well, just the last follow-up on that. So, let's say you have a neighbor that comes out and says you did something wrong. Based on that, or is it going to be pulled, or is there going to be some give and take? Or is it going to be a mob rule?
Well, any complaint we get, we're going to investigate, and we're going to determine that there is a violation.
So, all I'm asking is give us some guidelines as to what are the priorities of each of those categories, so we have them, and we're coming from the same playbook.
Yeah, we can give that to you.
Okay.
And I think including that would be pros and cons for both, and there are pros and cons for both for each of those.
Yeah, but I mean, I'm not going to put my staff in that position because that's just very subjective.
Okay, then I'll write the pros and cons for both and get that to everybody, you know, based off of any advice that comes from the staff. So, I'll be happy to put that together.
You have a question? Go ahead, let me, sorry.
I have a question and then I guess a request, not for your staff. The question would be, first off, what I would be afraid of happening in the special use is it only takes a small group to put a cap on how many, let's say, nine on a street. It only takes enough of people to get together to go ahead and submit that to whatever they want and put a stop to it, even though there could be 12. Somebody could have sold a house, somebody's kid could have taken over the house. So, that kind of worries me because now we're dictating a little bit of property rights. My recommendation isn't actually on us. From the information that Mr. Lawson told us, I'm a little disappointed to hear that it didn't come up in the DeFuski council meeting. So, I don't know how that came about, but I would think that's not on our staff, that's not on the county council. That's, you need to figure that out with the DeFuski council and why that wasn't on there and why the public didn't have the opportunity to discuss that. Because we can get those minutes, we can see those minutes, and then that way, we don't have to coordinate putting together a community meeting on DeFuski and dealing with logistics. It's the council's job to do that. They're the ones that represent them, and they're the ones that should hold a special meeting within the next two weeks, preferably, to get that information back to us. I think that's their obligation to the people of DeFuski, just like it's Mark's obligation to advocate for them right now.
And let me say, Eric has been great because we actually went over there twice. Now, it's been almost nine months or so, this is the last time we went over twice to have community meetings with the people over there.
Well, this item is postponed, and they'll come up with something... Well, this, this item is postponed, uh, and they'll come up with something, uh, in the next term, cuz it's postponed till the next county meeting.
June twelfth.
June twelfth.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
If I may speak, um, I, um, I'm directing this, um, to you, to Mark, uh, at this time. So, um, he mentioned that he's had his community meetings there, um, he's, don't plan to have any other public meeting on the Fuske.
I didn't say that, so don't put words in my mouth.
No, 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 I'm, I'm just, okay, I wanna, that's why I'm asking the question.
Okay.
Because, um, if you for any reason decide that you will have one between now and readings, um, I would love to, to accommodate you at those meetings. Thank you.
I'd like to join as well, if you do.
All right, we're gonna move on to item number fifteen, which is first reading of an ordinance for a text amendment to the Community Development Code. Division four point two point two zero, general standards and limitations to clarify connectivity standards for primary structures regarding building connections. Division four point two point three zero, accessory secondary dwelling unit, to modify allowable density to provide opportunity for an additional accessory dwelling unit, and to provide flexibility for areas of units. Division four point one point three six zero, short-term rentals, to modify general standards to allow for a principal dwelling unit or an accessory dwelling unit as a short-term rental on a single parcel.
I'll make a motion. This came through our committee.
Yes, ma'am.
I'll, I'll second.
If we can explain more if we need to.
Uh, yes. Ms. Howard made the motion. Mr. Bartholomew made the second. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, this will be approved without objection, and I see no objections. Item number sixteen is a first reading of an ordinance to provide for the levy of tax for school purposes for Beaufort County for the fiscal year beginning July one, twenty twenty-three, and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, and to make appropriations for said purposes. A motion, please.
Some move, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Glover makes the motion, Ms. Tavernick makes the second. Duly motioned and seconded, is there any discussion? Seeing none, this will be approved without objection, and I see no objections. Congratulations to the school district. Item number seventeen is a second reading of an ordinance to make appropriations for the county government and special purposes districts for Beaufort County for the fiscal year beginning July one, twenty twenty-three, and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, to levy taxes for payment thereof, to adopt law enforcement uniform service charges, user fee, to provide for the expenditure of said taxes and other revenues coming into the county, to provide for the expenditure of said law enforcement uniform charges, user fee, and other matters related thereto. A motion, please.
Some move, sir.
Mr. McKellen makes the motion, a second.
I'll second that.
Ms. Brown makes the second. Duly motioned and seconded, and a discussion. Mr. Cunningham.
You know I had to say something, Mr. Passamit.
Absolutely.
Um, yeah, I kinda have a couple of questions after our, um, public comment. Um, like, I've looked over the full presentation of merit base and the certain increases, and I'm not so sure there's enough time to discuss that and implement it today or in this meeting. But just looking at the comparisons of the difference between what was requested for this year specifically from last year and how far we are off, we're only about a hundred grand off from the actual, what has been requested from the treasurer's office. Something tells me that, not talking about the merit pays, merit or any of the other things, those are things that we can discuss and have meetings about in the future, and I hope we have those meetings, cuz I, I think it's noted to have those discussions openly. But I will make a motion to amend to add the hundred thousand and forty-seven dollars to the treasurer's section.
Is it, is that the correct fee amount?
So, um, you, you all need to understand that we move certain, um, money into what we call the payroll contingency. So as I understand it, and Hayes can come up here and elaborate on the numbers and all, uh, the payroll contingency is designed to keep everyone whole. We cannot keep holding on to vacant positions, uh, with our budget, because what that happens, what that does is, we have to fund those for the entire year. Many of those positions do not get filled during the year, so it results in, um, large surpluses. That's not fair to the taxpayers for us to run surpluses. So I'm gonna let Hayes explain the numbers to you, and I'm gonna step aside here, but there is money, the hundred thousand, in the payroll contingency, and Hayes can explain that to you all one more time.
Actually, it's a little bit more than a hundred thousand dollars. There's three gap positions that are in there that are accounted for in there. It's just accounted for in the payroll contingency. If she needs that, those funds and hires those individuals, we'll be more than happy to pay it. Um, I would ask, um, i- if, if you do decide to fund hers, that we drop those three gap positions outside of the payroll contingency account, so she would just stand on her own, and also probably, she could participate.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, yeah, so she, she, we drop those pay, those payroll, those positions out of that payroll contingency account, but, um, we, we, as county administration has to look at the county as a whole when we're doing the budget, and we have to look at all of our employees, and we have to make sure that all our employees are taken care of, and that all of our employees get a three percent raise, a COLA. And we also try to get a three percent longevity slash merit, or whatever this will end up being. And it's give little, take little. I mean, uh, budgets were moved around here and there. Um, la- last year, there's a four hundred and eighty thousand dollar surplus in the treasurer's general fund budget. Um, we didn't see a problem with it, we didn't do it maliciously. Uh, it was just part of getting the budget where it needed to be to get it balanced, and that's what we tried to do. Any other question?
No.
You have a motion on the floor. It has not been seconded yet.
I'll second it.
All right. It's duly motioned and seconded, we're gonna have the discussion. The question is now, before us, there is money set aside. It, as, as the treasurer fills those three positions, they would automatically move into her budget from where they exist. The question before us now is, on this motion is, no, we would like to take those specific positions and put them in the treasurer's budget. Everybody understands? Okay.
I have a question.
That's your motion.
So, that's his motion, is to give her the money in her budget.
Correct.
It's, it's in the budget, it's just not in that line.
Well, I have a question, or comment, and maybe Hayes can answer this. The, the question is not just those three jobs. If I listen to Ms. Walls, the issue was also she wants to, uh, what's like increase the base pay? So the three jobs is one piece of the hundred thousand, am I correct?
The hundred thousand dollars is not gonna give, give her employees a five percent base raise for across the board, her thirty-three employees. It's, I mean, it'd be part of the whole, but the, the, she has three gap positions that if she wanted to fill, that, that's what, what we took out of there. And, um.
Got it.
Those two different things you're talking about.
It is two different.
Yeah. It just sits there. Yeah, we, we not speaking of apples and.
You wanna go first, Mr., or, Mr. Administrator?
No, you.
Yes, my argument's pretty simple. Um, I don't know what it's like to do that job, I don't know what it's like to run that office, just like I don't know what it's like to run your office. I know one thing, though. That office has been very successful, and that office has been very successful. We just got done presenting a award to her a couple of months ago for how good her office has been doing. Um, I'm not the person to go line by line on these numbers. We have people that do that, she has people that do that. With the job that she's done and the job our staff has done, I have to put the faith and the trust that the numbers that she's presenting for the hundred thousand have to be accurate. That, that, that has to be the job we do if she's, or the faith you have to put in that, if she's doing the job that she's doing.
It is accurate.
So I'm gonna stand by my motion, do that. And it's for this year, we're not putting in an implementation for something year over year over year. We have another twelve months to discuss that. I'm talking about this year right now for the job, that has been done. If she believes this is a program that can continue to make her as successful as she has been, then I would continue to.
So what are you talking about? Are you talking about a hundred thousand dollar shortfall?
A hundred thousand dollars to her.
Or are you talking about a five percent increase for her employees?
A hundred thousand, if she believes how she needs to use it, a hundred thousand and forty-seven dollars that she's requesting from her original request to what we offered, that's the difference.
And you, and you all think that that's a fair thing to give the county employees a three percent merit potentially, or less than that, but to allow an elected official to give their employees more than what the county employees, who many of them perform the same basic function day in and day out as the treasurer's office. They are just a pass-through entity. They don't have to calculate anything, they look at numbers on a piece of paper, they collect that payment, they put it in the system, and they issue a receipt.
Make no mistake, I think everybody should get a raise, which I've advocated for when we were in Buckwalter, when we talked about.
I would like for that raise to be consistent across the board.
So the budget I have in front of me is this one right here that has come to advocate for, and that's the one I'm looking at. But I've also been at Buckwalter Place talking about, I don't believe it should be done on percentages, because percentages are done by your base salary. There's a big difference between a three percent raise on a thirty thousand dollar employee than a three percent raise on a hundred thousand dollar employee. I've already made that argument before, but I do stand by changing the number to the actual requested amount, and the difference is a hundred thousand and forty-seven dollars.
Mr. Chairman, why?
Hold on a second.
Okay.
The next person was Mr. Lawson and then Ms. Brown.
Yes, and, and one point I do agree with you, um, Mr. Cunningham, is that, Maria, you have done a phenomenal job, and we appreciate that, there's no doubt about that, we all know that, and that's not what we're, we're talking about here. On a county level, um, we need to treat each of our, um, elected officials the same. We can't allow one county, uh, elected official to get more money and pay their employees more than other elected officials that are Beaufort County employees. If not, if they're not Beaufort County employees, which we do have a couple elected officials that aren't, they can pay them however they want to. But within our guidelines, um, we're allowing Ms. Walls, and again, if the, that's what the money is going for, is that five percent increase, is allowing her to, two people in our county that are same, same position, but in different departments, should be gonna, giving a raise for the treasurer's department, and the other, the other one will not get a raise. So again, you look at, at being, trying to be fair throughout the county, I hate to use the, I'm sitting here thinking, what, what example can I give? But it's me like having thirteen children, which are the thirteen county, um, elected officials, and yet one is doing much, much better and doing a great job compared to everybody else, but you have to treat your children all the same. And that's what we're, we're talking about here. Now, the one thing I'm not sure about is if we do raise her, um, raise her amount this year, whether that can ever be taken away again, cuz we've learned that, that as soon as you give someone more money, that money is there in perpetuity, we, we can't lower someone's budget. So again, this is not about Ms. Walls doing a bad job, she has done an incredible job. It is trying to be fair to all of our county employees and to make sure that, that, that we are doing the right thing, uh, when it comes to, um, what we do and the pay raises we give is gonna be county-wide, not just for one particular office. But again, Ms. Walls, you do an incredible job, thank you for everything you do, there's no doubt about that.
Have a question.
Mr. McKellen.
Mr. Greenway, this hundred thousand dollars is for three positions, the salaries for those three positions, is that correct?
All right, so this hundred thousand dollars is, the breakdown of it is between two different categories. One is twenty-five thousand dollars in her credit card fees line item, and the seventy-five thousand dollars is in salaries and fringes. Again, we didn't take the seventy-five thousand dollars away from her department, we moved it to the payroll contingency account where every other department's vacancies are sitting, not just hers.
I get that, but the money has been designated specifically for salaries for three vacancies. And the other twenty-five was expenses on a credit card?
That's right.
Okay, thanks, thank you.
I just wanted to say, Mr. Chairman.
No, you're not.
Okay. I just wanna say that, I went, um, I moved down, before I moved down here from Virginia, the governor of Virginia cut, cut all the departments that brought in revenue, and I learned from that, that you just, you know, you just don't do that. You just, if they need the money, if they're bringing in the money, the revenue, and it's, and that person's asking for extra money, then we should give it to them. But that's just my own personal belief, opinion.
Any others?
Chairman.
Go ahead.
I go, I follow.
Don, you're up.
You should. I like following you, though.
Just go ahead, go ahead.
Um, yeah, let, let me say that, um, and I, I echo what Mark said about Ms. Walls, she's done an excellent job, uh, there's no question about that. But, um, we did a study several years ago, and the question at the time was whether elected official is in the county, um, pay plan, or they're gonna be outside the county pay plan. If I'm not mistaken, I think Ms. Walls, you elected to be in the county pay plan, pay plan. So that's where we are right now. The only elected official I remember being outside of that was the sheriff department, and the sheriff said they did not wanna be a part of us, they got their own pay schedule. Um, and so we, we did a study increase, and we increased all wages, et cetera, et cetera. Um, now, I, I am with you, Ms. Walls, I just don't know how to, to get there. I am with you in that there are staff within the county system that we are having difficulty employing because of salary and pay, because of pay. And so I wanna get to you, but I also know that there are staff members within the county at this time that we can't hire because of the low pay. Um, a lot of that work is in public works, and dishwashers are making more than some of our public employees. I do know that. So I wanna get to you, I just don't know how to get there because of the agreement that we established several years ago, that you are inside the county's pay program. So I'm hoping that you can help me get to where you are, because I wanna bring up some other staff members within the county pay period as well.
Could I just say one thing?
I don't know about anybody, anybody else here, but the confusion is this, I hear this is a hundred thousand dollar number, and I've heard county pay plan, salaries for three positions, credit card payments, and merit raises. What can we do with all of those categories with a hundred thousand dollars?
Now, the, the merit raise is already built in.
I, I'm, but I'm saying, but it's been deemed as all these different things for this one hundred thousand dollar thing, and I'm, you know.
It's the hundred thousand dollars where it is and where it's being suggested to be moved to. That's what we're doing. We have to move it from a couple different lines into her account.
Final argument?
Uh, let's make sure everybody else has had a, a chance to speak.
Oh, I, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I, I listened carefully to what Mark said, and I, I agree with everything you said, but also to the hard part, and the hard part is that what you said at the end, that's the hard part. The treasurer's office does a fabulous job, but what you said at the end is, makes sense to me, too, so.
I, I just wanna say, you know, I'm no one here, but I appreciate, you're the only elected official in here advocating for the budget that you submitted, so I'm inclined to support you. You know what your office needs, I'm, I'm gonna back you on this, so.
Yeah, just my, my final point is exactly what David just said. I'm not arguing we shouldn't have pay raises around the county. I don't believe it should be done by percentage. I think if you're gonna do it, you do it on the form of a bonus, just like we did for EMS, when, when we did for COVID, we gave them a flat rate. It wasn't based by their percentage. We gave them all the same amount of money for the jobs that they did. So I'm not inclined to say how she's gonna dictate the spend this money, but I am inclined to believe that she knows the best way to spend it, like she spent her money so far in there. Um, so I'm gonna stick with it, I'm gonna support it, and I hope you guys do as well. If we have more information in the meantime that comes across us, we still have a third reading along with a public hearing, but I think now's the time to put it in there.
Good. Please call the roll.
Chairman, a question.
Yes.
Can we be sure what the motion is in terms of dollar amount?
Yes, the motion is to move one hundred thousand forty-seven dollars that are in two other lines outside of the treasurer's budget to be put into the treasurer's budget for the treasurer to use that money as she sees fit.
One hundred thousand forty-seven.
That's correct.
Contingency will be reduced by that amount.
That's correct. Okay. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Tavernick?
Yes.
Councilmember Reitz?
Yes.
Councilmember Lawson?
Mark Lawson, no.
Councilmember Howard?
Alice Howard, no.
Councilmember Glover?
Uh, I'm voting no because I don't think that's the right process. Thank you.
Councilmember Dawson?
Yes.
I'm sorry, repeat yourself?
He said no.
No. Councilmember Bartholomew?
Yes.
Vice Chair McKellen?
No.
Chairman Passamet?
No.
It's six no, five yes. Motion fails.
Okay. Other discussion. Ms. Tavernick?
Yeah, we're still on the budget, correct?
Yes.
So when I look at the capital budget, which I have in front of me, capital improvements, I was disappointed to see there's nothing in here about the Sun City Fire Department EMS facility, which this council voted to approve. So I don't see any provision for it here. And rather than amending the budget, if, with your permission, Chairman, after we vote on the budget, I'd like the permission to make a motion to do some appropriations for that facility from one of our bonds coming due. But I don't want to amend the budget at this point.
Correct. Is it accurate to say the fire department's not in here?
It is not.
It is. It is not.
It is not for the fire station.
Right.
Yes.
Right. So this would be a separate item after we take action on the second reading. Got it. Okay. No further discussion. We will now vote on item number seventeen, the second reading. So Mr. McKellen, you begin. Say that again. We're voting on the second reading of the ordinance.
Yes.
And you made the motion.
Yes.
Ms. Brown, you were second.
Yes.
You called the remainder.
Sorry, you didn't say call the roll.
I knew those two.
Councilmember Tavernick?
Yes.
Councilmember Reitz?
Yes.
Councilmember Lawson?
Mark Lawson, yes.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Glover?
Yes.
Councilmember Dawson?
Yeah.
He said yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Cunningham?
No.
Councilmember Brown? Oh, you've already voted, sorry. Councilmember Bartholomew?
Yes.
Chairman Passamet?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, we're at item number eighteen. Well, we're going to take your item next.
So, I'd like to make a motion that, okay, I'll make the motion, then I'll explain it, I guess? Or you want me to explain it first?
No, you can make the motion.
Okay.
We will have the discussion about how it's going to come about.
So I'd like to make a motion that we do appropriation from a 2017 general obligation bond that's coming due next year to fund five million dollars of that bond for the Sun City Hilton Head Fire Station EMS Facility.
It's towards the engineering and construction-
Yeah, the whole thing.
Okay.
Whatever Jared puts in there.
That's the motion. May I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
That is motioned and seconded. Discussion. Everybody need discussion.
Oh, do you need discussion?
Yeah, I do.
Yes, we have general obligation bonds that were issued in 2017, and projects were not done. That money just sits there. We have noticed that the fire station in Sun City is something that is needed and would take several years to gather the impact fees necessary to build that. So we're looking maybe three years down the road before we could build that. Without being dramatized, we're now talking about life and death situation because it takes more than fifteen minutes at times to get to houses within Sun City, but it's not exclusive to Sun City. That area is growing so fast, it needs another fire station. The choice is to put it in Sun City because it can get to various places. So that we can do it now, and then when we collect impact fees, they will actually pay back those bonds.
Let me, let me make sure I understand, too, now. Who's running this fire station?
Bluffton Township Fire Department?
Yeah. Okay, that's what I thought.
So, one thing-
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. One thing I'll tell you is the chief, when Chief Thompson was here, he did an entire presentation on data-
And you asked a question about that station. I, I got that now.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just wondering whether that should come from them or this council. That's, are we directing them that they will build a fire station or they're preparing to do that? So I don't know enough about-
I can clarify that.
Please.
So if you remember when Chief Bullware spoke about his budget, I asked about that time. It's already been approved by this council to build a fire station there. And I asked Chief Bullware, where was the money? And he said, well, we could gather impact fees over the next several years. So this is simply saying, as the chair said, instead of waiting to comprise five million dollars of impact fees, we could use this general bond that's coming due, and then the impact fees can go back. So they've already, we've already approved the fire station. The chief has said why we need it, so we're not telling him to build it. They literally told us to build it. We didn't tell them.
Go ahead.
I have a question.
Mr. Frehler.
I'm sorry. So to the five million, that's the estimated cost just ballpark right now.
Yeah.
So as we've done with other fire districts with our other fire EMS consolidated with Bluffton Township, we split that cost. So our cost would be two and a half million dollars. They don't have the funds right now available, so that would be fronting them the funds, and then they would pay us back, basically acting as their bank. Another thought that could be looked at is rather than do the whole five, it's going to take us a while to get it designed and permitted and out to bid. So potentially, at least our half, which would be two and a half or maybe even three, just for some extras there, extra room at this time out of that geo-bond, that would give us enough money to get started on the engineering and design and see where their collection is. So when it comes to construction, we could come back for the full plan on how we're going to fund that. But that would give us enough to get the project moving as, as seems like the desire is, and also enough time to get a final cost estimate.
Mr. Chairman, I would really support that effort to get where you want to go before committing this council to do that, because I can see Chief Klein coming to us to do the same thing. And I don't think we want to go saying that all over the county, we're going to commit bonds to build five. But I understand what, you know, where you're going with it. I, I think, for me, it'd be better if it was done by staff and the fire department bringing it forward with some type of financial recommendation to move the thing forward and stuff.
Mr. Cunningham.
Yeah, two questions. Question number one is, how much are we getting back from the bond that's about to expire? And secondly, what are we allowed to use that money for? Are there like limitations on it?
There are limitations. It, 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 it has to do with the capital improvements to the, of the county. It's projects that we had slated that didn't, that haven't taken off yet. They'll have other means of funding sources. So the, we, we have this part, it's not a part of, it is, it's from bond proceeds from 2017 that we can allocate. And we've talked to the Bluffton Township Fire District. They're trying to build up their fire, their impact fees to pay it back to us. They get, and this is, I'm, I'm not testifying to this number, about 1.2 million dollars per year. So as we know anything in county government, it doesn't happen overnight. So it's probably going to be getting started, and it'll be a year to two years before it's completely developed. And hopefully, they'll have enough money. But we'll have an intergovernmental agreement with the Bluffton Township Fire District to split the, to split the cost on the construction of the building.
So I guess my, my next question's going to be, so it can't be used for salaries?
No.
Just checking.
He wants to know how much the bond is coming due for.
Well, the, the bond's not coming due. It's, it's, you tip, when you, we get a bond, you have proceeds, and we put them in a capital fund account, and then you have projects that you get done. And sometimes you can get them done, and sometimes politically you can't. And we've kind of hit a political wall on some of these things. And so we have money out there that is, it's not, it's for something else, but we can use it for this purpose. I, I think it's a good purpose and a good way to use the money. The, we've already borrowed the money, it's sitting in the account, and it'd be good for the citizens of Beaufort County to use it for this.
Real quick question. So, so as impact money comes in, that will then-
Offset.
Offset, it'll pay that back then?
Bluffton Township Fire District plans on-
So the impact fees will eventually pay for it all and pay back what was used out of the-
Well, not all. It'd be like the, the other ones where we-
Pay fifty percent.
Okay, fifty, we're responsible, yes, okay.
But we'd be responsible for fifty percent.
Okay. So we have it duly motioned and seconded. Any further discussion before we vote? Seeing none, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Tavernick?
Yes.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Reitz?
Yes.
Councilmember Lawson?
Mark Lawson, yes.
Councilmember Glover?
Uh, yes.
Councilmember Dawson?
You're on mute.
I heard yes.
He said yes. Councilmember Cunningham?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Bartholomew?
Yes.
Vice Chair McKellen?
Yes.
Chairman Passamet?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item number eighteen is a public hearing.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just let me make one clarification for council. Whenever you see this next on the agenda, it will be for first reading in an ordinance.
Correct.
Yeah.
Uh, this is a public hearing and approval of a resolution authorizing the county administrator to enter into a lease agreement for real property located at 3200 Road and Ace Hardware of Hilton Head. Before I go to a motion and second, is there anybody in the public who wishes to address this particular item as part of the public hearing? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. A motion and second for this-
Some move, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cunningham makes the motion. Second?
I'll second it.
Ms. Tavernick makes the second. Duly motioned and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, this item will be approved. Item number nineteen is a public hearing and approval of a resolution authorizing the county administrator to enter into a lease agreement and commercial operating agreement for real property located at 3200 Road with Gettibin and Associates LLC DBA Go Rentals. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to make comments in the public section about this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public section. Do, I need a motion and second, please?
Some move, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cunningham and Mr. Bartholomew duly motioned and seconded for this item. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, this will be approved without objection, and I see no objections. Item twenty is a public hearing and approval of a resolution authorizing the county administrator to execute a lease agreement with Landmark Baptist Church encumbering property owned by Beaufort County known as a portion of Chichesee tract. Is there any member of the public who wishes to comment about this? Seeing none, we'll close the public portion. A motion and second, please?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Howard makes the motion.
I'll second it.
Ms. Brown makes the second. Duly motioned and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, this will be approved without objection. Item twenty-one, public hearing and approval of a resolution authorizing the county administrator to enter into a lease agreement for the Pat Conroy Literary Center Incorporated for a portion of the real property located at 1511 North Street.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Wait a second. Is there any member of the public who wishes to comment about this? Seeing none, we'll close the public. Now, Ms. Howard, you can make your motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. I made a motion, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second it.
Sorry.
Ms. Tavernick makes the second. Duly motioned and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, this will be approved without objection. Twenty-two is a public hearing of a resolution authorizing the county administrator to enter into a lease agreement with the Young Men's Social Club and South Pine Ladies Union for a portion of the real property located at 242 and 228 Scott Hill Road. Any member of the public who wishes to comment before Mr. Glover makes the motion? Seeing none. Mr. Glover, you now can make that motion.
I made the motion. We entered the agreement with the Young Men's Social Club and the South, South Pine Ladies Union.
And Mr. Bartholomew makes the second. Duly-
Sorry, my word. The, the item is only on there for public hearing.
Oh, it's only on there for public hearing?
Oh, really?
Gotcha.
Ah.
Okay. Yes, sir. You are going to address this as to why it's only on here for public hearing.
Yes, sir.
Which we should have known about, but didn't.
So it was directed to staff that the public, or excuse me, the Parks and Recreation Facilities Master Plan, that it, we wanted that to be presented before we voted on this.
Yes.
We have worked with their consultants, and our plan is to have that on the Public Facilities Committee meeting on June 26th.
Okay.
So that way you have all of the information. I think you requested that we have that presentation, Mr. Glover.
Yes. I duly remember that now.
I did make that request, though.
Yes.
I don't see why I have, you know, that's all right.
Okay. Well, that's our plan. I just want to let you know.
Thank you very much.
We asked for the request, but not the delay, right?
So we've, we've had the public hearing. Item twenty-three is approval of a resolution amending the American Rescue Plan Act funded public safety recruitment initiatives policy. A motion, please.
Some move, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cunningham makes the motion. Mr. Bartholomew makes the second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, this will be approved without objection. Now, before we go to citizen comments, I may have had brain damage at one point in time. Did we take up item number eight from the Public Facilities Committee meeting? We amended the agenda to do that.
It was, maybe if you intended number eight to be part of your present agenda, or not, it's not part of your present agenda, then it would be-
That's what I thought, because I had it here, and I don't have a motion and second. So-
The, uh, Councilmember Bartholomew, whenever he seconded it, he said to conclude he amended items. But that's what I wrote down, and we can do it another way.
Well, then, let's, let's do it so as if it's a separate item.
Number twenty-four?
Yes. And what we are doing is, I need a motion and second to recommend approval of an ordinance by title only, authorizing the county administrator to execute the necessary documents and provide funding for the purchase of a portion of real property located on Highway 170. As explained, it is next to the Cooler Tract, which we have purchased. It is a twenty-acre piece of property that is owned by Oldfield, who wishes to sell it to-
Oh, that's right.
Some move, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So, Mr. Cunningham, you are making that motion?
I'll second it.
Mr. Glover, you are making the second. It is duly motioned and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, that item will be approved without objection, and I see no objections. We are now at our second citizen's comments, and I have two people who wish to address county council at this point in time. Mr. Tropiano, you're first.
Good evening, council. I thought it was going to be a quiet night, so apologies for adding more gas on the fire here. Again, I live at 1 St. Helenville Road, and I'm the owner of Pine Island. I'm speaking tonight on an item that'll be on future agendas, and doing so to make sure that everyone understands the rationale and that it's crystal, crystal clear to everyone here in the room and the broader public, so there's no mixed messaging. On November 29th of 2022, I applied for a zoning map amendment to remove Pine Island from the cultural protection overlay because it never should have been included in there. Pine Island has historically been a non-conforming use. It has been a private, gated recreation destination for over 150 years and is on the historic registry as such. Ironically, people have literally paid to stay there to do activities. We know that now as a resort. It's been not, it has not been part of St. Helenville daily activities for the better part of two centuries, and its previous and current use is not allowed under either the previous or current iteration of the CPO. There's been no avenue for modulation to allow it, and there still isn't. Immediately after submitting our zoning map amendment application again last year, the county politely asked me to table it so that they could pursue, the administration could pursue their own text amendment to protect the area. We respectfully agreed, and just to be clear for the record, I never proposed any text amendments, and my application was never denied. amendments, and my application was never denied. What started as a cleanup of that ordinance ended as a full overhaul, resulting, in my opinion, substantive changes to the language and still provides no avenue for non-conforming use. Because of this, I've reactivated that zoning map amendment from November, and I seek to return the property to the base zoning of T2R. I wanted you guys to hear this from me because you're going to be told that I'm trying to skirt the rules. I'm not. We just haven't solved the problem. Properties similar in size, location, and use were excluded from the CPO in 1999, as were properties with development plans registered with Beaufort County, such as my own. Over the last six months, there's been discussion of a compromise in this very room. This is the best avenue for compromise, and I'd like to get to it. The CPO has been strengthened, and now we can make it a win-win-win for the community, for the county, and for myself and my property. We've had six months of public discussions about what I'm willing to do, and now let's make it happen. Giving you guys the pen, I'm willing to collaborate, and I have tried desperately to collaborate with everyone in the community, and will continue to do so, and you'll be hearing from those meetings as well. Since January, I've had a total of nine minutes to speak, but over the next few weeks and months, I'll be making sure that everyone has the real facts so that they can make a decision that is actually informed, and we can arrive at a long-term win for everybody. The item will be in the planning commission on Monday, June 5th, the community with services and land use on Monday, June 12th, and then three readings of council thereafter. As one of the largest investors in St. Elma, I continue to seek partnership with current and future generations of Almond residents to ensure that everyone thrives in the place that they call home. I encourage anyone to reach out with any questions. I appreciate all you do for Beaufort County, and I look forward to our, our next meetings. Thank you very much.
Frank Sirelli? He left? Maria Walls?
I want to begin by thanking the council members first, Councilman Cunningham, and those who voted to support our budget request. I'm not your child. I'm a professional here in this building, and I'm doing a gosh darn good job with a great team of people behind me. I am not everyone else. And if you think you have a problem being short-staffed in public works, let me tell you how hard it is to be short-staffed in your revenue source office. The surplus that was referenced in this one-sided conversation was due to our inability to staff because no one wants to work for $17.98 an hour. Our taxpayers should know that I'm disappointed, and they should be disappointed in the members who voted no this evening and ashamed of the process that council has allowed to occur in this budget process. Over 12 years in the treasurer's office, we have fought to restore credibility to an office in shambles 12 years ago. We have fought through calamities and disasters that have benefited everyone and sacrificed ourselves on many of those occasions. We've done these things because I only know one way to be. My standard of measurement is to be the best. That's it. Not mediocre, the best. Past councils have always equipped the treasurer's office with what we requested so that we could make the best decisions for our taxpayers. And with the budget that was passed tonight, that is not going to happen. Although you're primary and largest revenue creator, I do realize that we are one department amongst others. So, I've said to many of you on occasion, just tell me no. But this is where the no should happen, not in private conversations, because I'm not a part of administration. I represent the people who voted, all of us, into office. What our taxpayers should resent is that before Councilman Cunningham's motion this evening, your denial was made through silence, in ignorance of what the consequences could be. I was never asked. What our taxpayers should take issue with is the complete and utter lack of transparency in a process that has hindered them from making informed decisions, whether about this budget or in the voting booth. The treasurer's office requested a budget that reflected what is needed to continue being the best, and it should, it should be unacceptable that it is denied without transparent and public discussion that our taxpayers deserve. They will not find, our taxpayers, they will not find a record of what I requested or any other elected official. The only budget they will find a record of is the one presented by county administration. Muddying the waters of public transparency. They should know that I vehemently protested this significant deviation from past practices and the inappropriate power council is shifting from the voters who selected their elected officials to the administration that you hired. The process through which council's budget has been created is wrong. There should be nothing more transparent than the taxation process. And for the first time, rather than being equipped to be the best in the state for the past 12 years, you are forcing the treasurer's office, should you vote for this exact budget in the third reading, to backslide into less than what our taxpayers deserve.
Is there any further action to come before this council?
Uh, yeah, actually, yeah, yeah, she told me that she not want to speak. Yeah. Yeah, she told me she not want to speak. Obviously, she brought it up to you. Yeah.
Go ahead.
Okay. Okay. Yeah. You know, I'm sitting here really just kind of taken back on Mrs. Wallace. You know, sometimes the way how this council treats people is just, is unorthodox, and then also, you know, coming, coming to these, coming to these meetings, and the doors are locked. I mean, who's, who's, and this is not my first time saying this, whose responsibility is that? If, if someone wasn't leaving out, I couldn't even get in tonight. Just by, by, by the grace, there were a group of people were leaving who obviously had something going upstairs. I was banging, 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 banging on the door. He couldn't get in. Is this, is this a public facility where we're having a public meeting at? Because the doors, the door was locked. I mean, who's, and who, I mean, who's responsibility is that? What if someone else wanted to come in? What that guy who, then he just called, went to the bathroom, went to his car? He couldn't get back in. The door is locked. Whose responsibility is that? You know, sometimes a lot of stuff that this council do, e- even in terms of the 15-minute mark, of, you know, you say, well, you only have 15. One guy got up here tonight, and he told me, well, you have two, two more minutes. Listen, when you come to a school board meeting, thank, thank, thank you, thank you for coming. When you come, if we have, we have, we have our constituents who want to speak, we extend it. If someone make a motion, you can make a motion to extend, to hear the people who put you in office. It makes my stomach sick when I come in and you say, oh, well, we, we only have time for one more person, or we're done, and you cut the time out. Like, 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 this is a, like, you're God, you're God. That has got to stop. That is very disrespectful, and it comes, and it comes across to be not caring, no empathy, just, this is it. That's not true. If this body, if this body don't care, the one message that this body sends to the rest of the people out there who we're bearing every weekend, every day. There's nothing for the kids in this county to do. I've come up here, and I've said that several times. And you can look at the time, you can look at the time. Listen, FYI, let's, let's not make sure that, that we're not violating people's rights either on this council when they come up to speak. That's enough. I'm sick of it. When are we going to support things for the kids that they do in this community? When I was growing up, we had bowling alleys, we had movie theaters. We had several things for the young, for the young community to do. We can't just keep saying, oh, because of their behavior, we don't have it. The same way she wants her office supported, we have to support the sheriff's office, and we have to support, we supporting these new businesses that keep coming in town and building up these buildings, the same support we giving them? Let's, let's, let's put something out there to support some people who want to come and open that bowling alley that sits over in Port Row that, that's not open right now. We got the money to do it. It's time for this council, for this, for this same council to show leadership in this community because we're looking to you for it.
Thank you for your comments.
And, and you're welcome to, to continue hearing my comments because I'm looking for this, for this, for this body to step it up. And have some empathy, please. Mr. Chairman, let's start with yourself.
Mr. Cunningham, did you wish to say something?
Yeah, I just had a quick question. Over the next couple of days, is there any way administration get to me the number of employees we have excluding the school district since they make their own budget with their own taxing, and the average salary, if that's possible to do? Since, I mean, I'll just let you know, the reason I'm asking and I'm preparing to do at the next meeting is if we're going to talk about everything being percentage-based, and it should be percentage-based, then maybe we find a flat number. Thank you.
There being no further action, this meeting is adjourned.